Just, okay, it's on now. We're ready to call the meeting to order. Our board president had to leave, and so I will be taking over chairing the meeting tonight. Uh, let's see. Can we have one of our student trustees, ladies, and the pledge of allegiance? We have roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Student trustee Massand?
Here.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Here.
Trustee Withrow?
Here.
Trustee Napoli Bella Reese?
Here.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen?
Right here.
Trustee Gonzalez Brito is not. Trustee Quinlan?
President.
Trustee Johannes?
Here.
And trustee Delphine Polk?
Here.
You have corps.
Thank you.
Okay, I will be reading the agency D board statement of cooperation. Um, the Board, Peralta Board has adopted a statement of cooperation that codifies our commitment to set the bar for excellence in governance and community college leadership, and to lead by example for our Peralta colleges. The full statement of cooperation is attached to our agenda, but in summary, we have committed to build trust and seek to understand each other, be prepared, and follow good governance and ethical protocols, and model the behavior we want others to exhibit. We therefore commit to honoring and upholding these commitments in words and in action.
Thank you. So, the report on items of closed session, on a motion by trustee Withrow and second by trustee Napoli Reese, the board voted six zero to non-renew employee nine six zero five. Can we have a mo- can we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Some of-
Approval.
Second?
Motion made by trustee Withrow and seconded by Nikki Gonzalez Ewen.
Student trustee Massand?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes? Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
And trustee Gonzalez Brito is not here. Uh, agenda is approved.
All right, we have some technical manipulations up here.
So now we have approval of the minutes.
Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Some of-
Second.
Okay, did you get those?
Uh, Johannes for the motion and-
Yeah.
Uh, Gonzalez Ewen for the second?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Student trustee Massand?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Abstain.
Thank you. Trustee Napoli Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewen?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
And agenda is appro- or minutes are approved.
So can we have our, uh, associated student government reports?
So I see Natae Myers from College Valamita. Natae?
Good evening to everyone and everyone on the board. Um, just to give you a little piece of what COA is doing. Um, today we had our Black History Month grand finale with our soul food Sunday meal. Everyone came out and definitely enjoyed. Um, as COA is currently working on our Women's, um, History Month, we are going ahead and displaying in our F building, um, some of the famous women and women that are, have not been reported or known so well. Um, women from the Bay Area and abroad. We will be go- we will be going to the student governance meeting tomorrow, um, where we'll be able to discuss with others and our other, um, S, uh, COA, I'm sorry, other, um, student bodies to, uh, come together to get some new things we can come together. Peralta, um, two. Uh, let's see. Also, we are participating in the March in, March in March on the seventh, and we are also preparing to go to our annual SSC conference in April from the fifth through the seventh. That is all from COA as of now. Thank you.
We have Christian from Berkeley City College.
Hello, good evening all. So, a quick rundown for BCC. So the ASCC met last Thursday on the twenty seventh and meet next Thursday on the twenty ninth, as usual. Um, last week we had the, um, Berkeley City College, um, data analyst present the strategic plan, uh, to the room, and there were many students engaged at the presentation wanting to learn more about their, sort of backend processes with the research and the college retention and enrollment rate, so that was cool. Um, we also had the Peralta Federation of Teachers, the executive director, his name is Sejal, uh, coming to the room last, last meeting as well to present what, um, evening of CFP is all about. And we are now in a practical scheduling workshop that BCC could just learn more about, uh, Peralta Board, the trustee board, and the ASCC as well. Cool. Um, we have a woman career panel happening on, on March seventh, so next. I'm not too sure, but yeah, March seventh is gonna be one of our biggest events of the year. So yeah, we're gonna have six panelists speaking on their H experiences in the workforce and, um, yeah, uh, last, uh, I believe yesterday we had our Pomoga Day, um, which was very, I got a lot of students come out and, uh, and watch a presentation for, um, Black History Month and come out to play some games, do some dances. So it was a very, um, delightful event. And also like, um, Natae mentioned, uh, we are present, preparing to go to the, um, student governance meeting tomorrow at the district office. So that'll be cool. We have about five to 10 people going, so that'll be very nice. Um, also, like Natae mentioned, we are preparing to take around eight to 10, I, I believe, people to the, uh, SFC, the General Assembly Conference on the fifth to the seventh, as we mentioned. Um, and yeah, that is all for my report. Thank you all.
Thank you.
I don't see any other student leaders on Zoom.
Okay. Let's see, uh, the classified president sent us a note saying he had no report for tonight. So, uh, report from our district academic senate.
Thanks very much. Uh, hi folks, this is Matthew Goldstein, president of the district academic senate, as you've heard. Uh, thanks for having DAS on tonight's agenda. A few quick hits this evening, a note on the ten plus one, an acknowledgement of the DO and the board's combined effort to improve the budgeting planning process, and a few reminders on some important upcoming dates. First, as departments around the district start working out their fall 24 schedules, faculty have been raising concerns about administrative directives with respect to modality. Curriculum, as you've heard me say up here before, is the very first item on the ten plus one. That is the list of professional and academic matters over which the senate has legal authority under Title V. And modality, that is how a course is taught online or in person, or some combination of those two approaches, is part of curriculum. So when administration makes scheduling assignments, as is its right, it has to rely on faculty input as it makes those determinations as to what form a particular class should take. Reports are coming in that faculty are being told to, they must offer classes in a certain modality without formal consultations, and it's important that faculty weigh in on what's best for students and what's best for pedagogy. These are tough decisions. No one has the magic formula about how to balance, uh, in-person versus online class offerings, but it's absolutely crucial that faculty lead the way in those discussions, that there be formal consultations. And we don't know, after this question of the imperfect understanding of how the balance between virtual and non-virtual might affect us, we don't know how apportionment will be affected by these approaches. No one has that kind of magic, um, understanding yet, and it's complicated further by the impending arrival of the SCIF. That said, it's important from a pedagogical point of view, a, um, legal point of view, and certainly an organizational morale point of view, to talk to faculty and have them involved in the formal discussions around how these, uh, assignments are being made. Uh, next, I'd like to acknowledge the Office of Finance, the chancellor and the board for responding to faculty calls to revamp the budget planning process and calendar. Uh, Dr. Nathaniel Jones and his staff, uh, following the board's move to change its summer vacation, uh, have aligned the budget planning calendar with the academic calendar in a more effective way. And this will improve the ability of faculty and staff and even administrators and students to get involved in the budget planning process. Faculty would have preferred a firmer commitment from the Office of Finance to, um, get documents that are to be decided on to the committees that will look at them a full month in advance. Um, we're still optimistic that we can get more lead time. We did get assurances from Dr. Jones that every effort would be made to get those documents to the committees making the decisions. But again, we hold out hope that it will be a ni- a nice long vetting period so that members of the committee can make their choices in an informed way and also, uh, share the documents with their constituent groups. But again, we're pleased to see the district moving in this direction and pleased to have faculty input taken seriously. Um, finally, a few important dates at your next meeting, March sec- tw- uh, March 12th. A new crop of freshly tenured faculty will be recognized in a special pre-meeting reception. That's four to six right here, I understand. The effort by the district office, led by Dr. Tina Vasconcelles in particular, to make sure that faculty are part of the reception honoring faculty, is noted and much appreciated and marks another positive shift in the relationship between the district and faculty at the colleges. So we appreciate that. Next, I want to let folks know again about the March 22nd, uh, PBIM retreat. I think I mentioned it last time, but this will be a focused effort to think carefully about our shared governance process. It will involve faculty, staff, administrators, and students, and we'll be, again, developing new ideas about how we approach shared governance and, uh, who knows, maybe even developing new goals for the district altogether. Thanks so much. Have a good meeting. And again, I appreciate, uh, the district putting the DAS on the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. Goldstein. Public communication on matters that are not on the agenda?
We have one speaker. That's Jeff Sensory.
I was, sorry, I want to stop by saying hello to everyone, um, to, um, chancellor, trustees, those people over there, those people over there. Um, I guess I'll, I'll start by saying that, you know, I was, I was looking over the agenda and I was looking specifically at the budget presentation. I was having some trouble because although the presentation itself is pretty clear, I, I wasn't able to find much by way of footnotes or references. And that's not just to check, mind you, but it's also for, for me to learn because, um, moving forward at least, you know, kind of requires that we're speaking the same language. And, and right now, that's just not one that I'm fluent in. Luckily, I, I have many, many faculty, at least dozens of faculty that are, and they're, they're helping me out along the way, but the references would, would be helpful for me. Um, also, I will say that as far as the budget goes, I have a passing understanding of the prognostications of the budget for the coming year. Um, and I'd suggest that maybe right now we're at a spot where there's a small window, um, where maybe Peralta constituency groups can actually come together, um, through all the revisions and everything that's going on the next few months. But a small window where we might be able to come together and discuss and promote serious discussion about our needs, um, with the electives up in Sacramento. Um, I think that, you know, I guess pardon, pardon me if that's, it sounds a little weird. I'm, I'm not used to actually, you know, um, talking about cooperation. But, um, maybe we do that on, um, well, whenever at the PBIM summit, but even before that, at March seventh, the March in March is happening. Um, a lot of teachers from all the way up and down the state are going, um, going to be there and be asking or demanding the, some of the same things that, um, that we need here. Um, lastly, I'll say that faculty are still concerned a little bit about working conditions and class cancellations, and whether the logic employed to make those cancellations are, uh, is consistent. Um, not just across campuses, but even sometimes across, um, departments in a single campus. So I'd ask that faculty, um, be informed, not just of what may or may not happen, um, but also why it's happening. Um, because as the last stop for students enrolling in a class, um, we're usually the ones that have to explain to them why their course was, was canceled or where they have to go and things like that. Um, tho- those are pretty much my comment. I hope you have a wonderful night, and, um, thank you.
Is there any other communication? No, sir? Okay, chancellor's reports?
Uh, thank you, Vice President Quinlan. Good evening, trustees, community. Um, go ahead and put the presentation up. So I'm pleased to give a report, uh, tonight, uh, to the board and the community. Uh, first, I wanna, um, thank, uh, the student journalists at the Daily Californian, the UC Berkeley Student Newspaper, for their article, "Peralta Community College District Sees Benefits From Two Years of Waived Tuition and Fees", published on February fourteenth. Like the Oakland side article that I shared at the last board meeting, the Daily Californian reported on the benefits of our Fall is Free, Spring is Free campaigns, and noting in particular how th- those fee waivers help students avoid a trade-off between education and basic needs. As, uh, Dr. Goldstein mentioned, our participatory governance meeting on February 23rd of the PBC and PGC, um, resulted in the approval of a new budget development calendar as requested by faculty and classified professionals. I want to thank, um, our interim vice chancellor, uh, Nathalia Jones for his work and the, um, district finance team for working together collaboratively to align the calendar and give more opportunity as was discussed tonight. Tonight, you actually have, um, reports from all four of our incredible college presidents. I want to thank them. They're listed there under my president's report, so you'll be able to see those reports for, for more information from the colleges. But I want to thank the colleges for their continued good work. And on tonight's agenda, there are several sub-grant agreements to develop apprenticeships at BCC in social and human surface assistance, uh, community health workers as well, and at Merritt College, developing apprenticeships in early education associate teacher, um, assistants. And at Laney College, there's also an agreement that's on the board agenda with Sparkpoint Oakland, um, to deliver financial wraparound services to justice impacted and CTE students. So I want to just thank, highlight a couple of items and thank our colleges for their incredible work. I had the opportunity to be out in the community this last week and want to, um, give a little shout out that I was, uh, had the honor of participating and leading a session called Creating an Inclusive College Lessons Learned at the CCLC Assalamar Leadership Skills Seminar on February fifteenth, which is an intensive four-day experience that focuses on issues facing women who have made a commitment to community college administration, either in their current positions or as a future goal. And so really, pleased to be invited to be a part of that and represent our district, um, in these conversations. I also had the opportunity as a featured speaker of the one-day plenary for the California Higher Education Basic Needs Alliance, known as CHEBNA. CHEBNA is an intersegmental effort bringing together all three systems, the University of California, the California State Universities, and the California Community Colleges to advance basic need security in California's college students. My focus was on the role of data in advancing basic needs as a human right. Uh, leadership from all four of our colleges were attended, in attendance, you can see their pictures there amongst the nine hundred, um, at the Sacramento Convention Center. It was joy to see so many familiar faces from Peralta, including John Nguyen from BCC, Doris Hankins from Merritt, Gary Aubrey from Laney, and more. All the basic needs coordinators were there too. It was my first time meeting them. It was pretty awesome. I also had the, as the incoming president of the Association of California Community College Administrators, I attended a portion of the annual conference, leading the closing day's plenary. A couple of other district employees were in attendance, and Berkeley City College VPI, Kuni Hay, I want to give a, a shout out to her as a featured speaker, as the president of the statewide chief instructional officers group. So again, Peralta is well represented, um, throughout the state for the incredible work that's happening. And last time, we said big congratulations to Professor Glenn L. Pearson of the College of Alameda's Department of Music, who won a Grammy earlier this month as a member of the Count Basie Orchestra, winners of the Best Large Jazz Ensemble Album category for their record, Basie Swings the Blues. Professor Pearson will be speaking at the COA Flex Day, um, coming up on March 12th. And then next, a big shout out and final congratulations to Coach, uh, Ramundo Vaughn and the Laney College Women's Basketball Team, who have been recognized as co-champions of the Bay Valley Conference. Way to go, Lady, uh, Lady Eagles. We really appreciate them. Um, we are champions and look forward to the continued celebrations on their behalf. And finally, I want to just remind everybody somewhere to, uh, Dr. Goldstein, that we're excited to be hosting the annual tenure reception here on March 12th, here at the District Service Center. At four o'clock PM, we look forward to celebrating the fifteen, uh, faculty who will be, um, honored for their, um, work that they've done around, um, earning tenure. So that ends and concludes my report for tonight.
Have the president's reports?
So, nope.
That was it. So we have a presentation on, uh, the governor's 2425 proposed budget.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice President Quinlan. Um, I'm welcoming, um, uh, interim vice chancellor Nathaniel, Dr. Nathaniel Jones to give this brief presentation to the board tonight. Welcome, Dr. Jones.
Thank you very much. Um, it's my pleasure to provide you this high-level overview of the governor's, um, 2425 budget that was provided, um, around January the 10th. Next slide, please. The budget proposal that the governor provided is influenced by critical economic conditions. Chief among them is the state's deficit that the governor's budget presentation assumed would be around thirty-eight mil- billion dollars. Excuse me. However, the, the, um, legislative analyst's office had a different number, and that was sixty-eight billion. The primary difference is accounting and their estimate point in time related to the receipt in terms of taxes. This is largely due to a filing deadline extension and market volatility. However, due to prudence on the part of the state, they have several reserves that they are planning to use to mitigate the need to make reduction- the need to make reduction in expense budgets. However, further, the horizon is characterized by risk and uncertainty. Next slide. What I would add additionally is that a few days ago, the, um, LAO's office actually increased their projected deficit from sixty-eight billion to now seventy-three billion. And so, um, the situation doesn't seem to be improving, but becoming more, um, concerning. There are a number of strategies that the governor proposed in terms of how to meet this fiscal challenge. Drawing on reserves, which I had mentioned earlier, to the tune of thirteen point one billion dollars, reducing various areas of the budget by eight point five billion, borrowing internally from special funds or other reserve sources to the tune of five point seven billion. Delaying funding for multiple items across the three fiscal years from twenty-six, um, through twenty-six, um, twenty-five, twenty-six, without actually reducing the funding, but just spreading it over those, um, different fiscal years to the tune of five point one billion dollars. And shifting expenditures from the general fund to other funding sources to the tune of, um, three point four billion. And lastly, deferrals of specific obligations to the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year to the tune of two point one billion dollars. Next slide, please. As many of you undoubtedly know that K-12 and the community colleges have Prop ninety-eight, a minimum guarantee of state funding. That, in a sense, insulates the, um, the K-12 and colleges from some of the, um, potential impacts. The other thing that I would mention is, in addition to Prop ninety-eight, there is part of Prop ninety-eight, which is a specialized reserve that can only be used for K-12 and the community colleges. So as you can see here, in general, the, um, Prop ninety-eight funding has been going up. Now, there is a small increase, approximately one and a half percent, um, from twenty-three, twenty-four, the current fiscal year to next year. So it's going up to about a hundred and nine billion dollars. Next slide. Now, of that hundred and nine billion dollars, community colleges get about ten point nine eight percent of those revenues, which, um, which equates to about twelve point four billion dollars. N- next slide, please. Now, the resources that are coming to the community colleges are, are going to be in a number of areas. First of all, um, the primary, um, adjustment in funding to the community colleges is going to be in the form of sixty-nine point one million dollars increase, um, for a cost of living adjustment of point seven six percent. And this is largely to fund the student-centered funding formula. So you can see the image to, uh, on the screen. And essentially, it shows the rates for, for twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the proposed rates for twenty-four, twenty-five. And that incremental increase is related to the point seven six percent, um, um, COLA that has been applied to the rate. Additionally, there is, um, twenty-nine point, um, six million ongoing on Prop ninety-eight funding for a point five percent enrollment growth. Next slide. Additionally, the, um, budget proposal includes about nine point three million adjustment for ongoing, um, categorical program to receive a similar point seven six percent COLA. And that includes adult ed, um, cares, um, you know, disability, EOPS, and the others. What I would mention here is that, um, beyond these programs, the other categorical program like C and others won't get additional funding. And so costs increases related to compensation and so forth would have to then be picked up by the general fund. Next slide. The other adjustments, um, are the nursing, um, baccalaureate, um, program. That's, um, one-time funding on, to the tune of, um, sixty million dollars. And as I mentioned earlier, there, there are specialized reserves for community colleges. And so, over the two fiscal years, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-four, twenty-five, um, the, um, governor is proposing, um, basically taking about seven hundred and twenty-two um, million dollars out of these reserves to mitigate the need to make expense reductions. And so, in a sense, our expenses, uh, or our funding is not intended at this point to decline. Next, next slide. And then the other, um, item that was mentioned was the student, uh, affordable student housing. The, um, administration remains committed to the, um, state providing, um, lease revenue bonds as an approach to funding, um, these, um, projects. Um, the projects that they have, um, indicated they will continue to support. And as it is anticipated, that more details about the manner in which they, the state will pursue a lease revenue bond to go on to the, um, November election will be, um, made clear in the May revision that will be coming out then. Next slide. So what does this mean for Peralta? Essentially, what we have is we have the, um, point seven six percent, um, COLA. And because of the hold harmless, that would be applied for, on a cumulative basis. So in last year, we, our, our total compensation of revenue was increased by, um, COLA that we received last year. And then this year, it will be increased by the point seven six because the college, or the district, I should say, um, maximum total compensation of revenue is based on the whole harmless calculation that exists today, which in twenty-four, twenty-five, that, um, particular method for hold harmless will end. And will be replaced with a funding floor, which I will go into at some additional time. But for now, what we are anticipating is an increase in revenues to the tune of only about a million dollars. Okay. Additionally, expenses related to salaries, benefit utilities, and other, um, areas of our operation is likely to increase much beyond the revenues that we're going to get. Hence, um, you know, we have some challenges that we'll have to meet in the coming budget year. Next slide. So that's the overview. I would happily answer any questions that you all may have.
Any questions for Dr. Jones? No questions.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next item is the consent calendar. Approval of all consent items. Do we have a motion? Did you catch that?
Delphine Polk, motion second.
Yes.
The second?
Second.
Trustee Johannes, second. Call for a question.
Ready for roll call? Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez? Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli of Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
And then trustee Gonzalez, Richo is not here, so motion carries.
Approval of state travel? Sorry, out-of-state travel. Can we have a motion, please?
We have to move down to action.
Okay.
Yeah, action item ten point one.
So, uh, consider approval of the resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, dash one, one, four, for twenty-three, twenty-four non-resident tuition fees.
Second.
Ready for roll call?
Any discussion? Roll call.
Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez? Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli of Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item ten point two. Consider approval of resolution for twenty-four, twenty-five non-resident capital outlay fee.
Move approval, second.
It was moved by Withrow and second by Gonzalez.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez? Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli of Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
And trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item ten point three. Consider review of the warrant payment report for the period, um, covering January first through January thirty, uh, thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four. Some motion?
Move approval.
Your second?
Second.
Could we, um, consolidate item ten point three and ten point four and vote on them together?
I'll accept that as my amendment.
Thank you.
So, okay, so we're consolidating ten point two and ten point three?
Ten point three and ten point four.
And ten point four, thank you. Um, the warrant payments report and the purchase order report. And the, uh, maker of the motion accepted and the second accepted, do a minute.
Roll call?
Roll call, please.
Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli of Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, Ewan?
Yes.
Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan abstain? Motion carries.
Item ten point five. Consider adoption of the final drawings and specifications for the new twenty-one, twenty-one eighteen Melvia Street Expansion Project at Berkeley City College pursuant to administrative procedures six, sixty-three, forty, and sixty-three, fifty. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Vice President Quinlan, tonight we have a presentation, um, on this item that is connected to this item and the next item. So I want to pass it to interim vice chancellor, Atheria Smith, to introduce our presenters who are coming forward right now.
Thank you, Chancellor Gilkerson, and good evening, Board of Trustees. I'd like to introduce, uh, Bob Parks from Kitchell. And I also would like to introduce the rest of the team for BCC, which is AECom, Sharon Serrano, and also Excel Construction. Go ahead, Bob.
Thank you. Um, good evening, Chancellor Gilkerson and the Board of Trustees. Um, thank you for giving me the opportunity this evening to present two board agenda items uh, for the new twenty-one eighteen Melvia Street project at Berkeley City College. Um, these board action items will enable the bond program to move forward with a significant construction project for the Peralta Community College District and for Berkeley City College. Um, the first item is ten point five, is to consider adoption of the final drawings and specifications, as was mentioned a second ago. And the second item is ten point six, to consider approval of amendment number five for the design-build team, Excel Construction and Ratcliffe Architects, um, to approve the remainder of the construction costs for the project. We have the presentation on the screen, so I'd like to go through this for a second. Um, you can see here on the first slide, a rendering of what the new facility is going to look like um, in downtown Berkeley on the corner of Melvia Street and Center Street. Um, can you go to the next slide, please? Um, the new facility is going to be a six-story, sixty thousand square foot, uh, building. It'll include fifteen new classrooms, including high flex classrooms, uh, with cameras for hybrid learning. Um, it'll have two art studios that'll move over from the existing Center Street campus. Um, a communications classroom and lab, anthropology classroom. It'll have student life, activity, and lounge area on the first floor, uh, learning resource center on the second floor, uh, student services, a wellness center, um, administrative and faculty offices spread throughout the building. Um, an outdoor patio, which you can see on the sixth floor on the southern end of the building. And then, right now, our, our goal is to, uh, have a lead rating of gold certification. If you can go to the next slide, please. This is a, a rendering of the main entry as you come in, uh, from the front door on the corner of Center Street and Melvia. Um, the welcome desk will be on the left-hand side, and straight to the back would be the new entry to the new, uh, student lounge area. Um, on the right-hand picture is the, what the new learning resource center will look like that is located on the second floor. Go to the next slide, please. So I want to give a little bit of historical context on the project. Um, our original design-build budget was established back in July of twenty-twenty at seventy-two point five million. Um, in April of two thousand twenty-one, we finished our, uh, selection process for the design-build entity, which was Excel Construction and Ratcliffe Architects. Um, the design team went through a design phase process from May of two thousand twenty-one through June of two thousand twenty-two, where we then submitted the documents to Division of State Architect for approval. Um, we went through a fairly extensive review process with DSA. Um, it took about fourteen months. There was a lot of structural comments and different things due to the location of this building being in a downtown urban environment. So it's a little bit different, uh, for DSA versus on a traditional campus. Um, we had quite a few challenges, um, over the last couple of years with COVID, supply chain issues, hyper-escalation, which I'll talk, talk about on the next slide. And then, we went through a bunch of work with Excel and Ratcliffe, and we determined that we wanted to keep going forward. We want to meet the goals of the project and the educational program. Go to the next slide, please. So we worked with the design-build team to maximize small local business participation, um, obtain more transparent pricing from the subcontractor community, and eliminate subcontractor qualifications from their bids. Um, the design-build team provided a final guaranteed maximum price in November. Um, our project team with AECom and Kitchell and IVC Smith vetted the final guaranteed maximum price, and we agree with the pricing based on current market conditions in the industry. Um, we met with the Berkeley City College team in January. We reviewed several different alternates for the project. And we're, we were able to bring down the final guaranteed maximum price to eighty-six million, seventy-nine thousand. Next slide, please. Um, this was the main, uh, slide I wanted to touch on. Uh, we, our project budget has increased over the last few years mainly due to hyper-escalation. Um, this slide, there's two lines on this slide. The orange slot, the orange line represents the traditional amount of escalation we would carry in our project budget, um, at five percent per year. The green line is what has actually occurred in the market since July of twenty-twenty. Typically, as you can see, between July twenty-twenty and about April of twenty-twenty-one, the goal is that green line stays below what our budget is. After the design-build team came on board and we started to Um, after the design build team came on board and we started designing is when we started hitting a lot of the issues with COVID and hyper escalation. You can see the green line just started incrementally jumping up, um, as time went on. Um, the A E Com team, uh, presented a board presentation in April of two thousand twenty-two where we highlighted this huge escalation challenge we were faced with. Um, and as you can see on the, on the right-hand side, when we were getting closer to getting the final guaranteed maximum price, we were actually projecting a potential increase to the budget of twenty-four point six-two percent. Um, we've worked with the college and the district on mitigation strategies of aligning scope from, scope from phase two projects to, to compensate for this first project for Berkeley City College. If you can go to the next slide, please. This slide gives you an overview of the original project budget in July of twenty-twenty. Um, the total project cost, including the design build team and district soft costs was eighty-three point eight million. Our projected cost before we got all the final numbers in from our subcontractors was one oh four point five million. After we received the G M P from the design build team, their final number was eighty-six million, seventy-nine thousand. With our district soft costs, our final actual budget as of November twenty-twenty-three is one oh one point one million. Go to the next slide, please. So, uh, Chancellor Gilkerson and I met and we talked a little bit about some of the different soft costs that have changed over the last few years. These are just some of the highlights. Um, this project being located in downtown Berkeley, um, working with P G N E and East Bay Mud, we've had to increase our soft cost fees for dealing with them. Um, we've increased our soft cost fees for I T and A V scope based on um, other projects around the district and what we're seeing in the current market. And we've also increased our owner's project contingency within the overall project uh, budget by one point two million to help compensate for the, the increased cost due to escalation. Go to the next slide, please. So this is our, uh, proposed budget reallocation. Uh, the original bond spending plan budget in twenty-twenty had the twenty-one eighteen Melvia Street project at eighty-three point eight total project budget. Um, and the twenty-fifty Center Street, which is the phase two project at thirty-one point five million. We've recommended and reviewed with the Berkeley City College executive team to move transfer funds from the future phase two twenty-fifty Center Street project to Melvia Street project so we can move this project forward. Um, the Berkeley City College team approved that, uh, plan on February second of this year. Um, some of the benefits why we're, we're moving this direction is our number one priority since we started the initial educational planning back in two thousand nineteen was to maintain the program goals for this project. And realigning the, the Center Street reconfiguration budget helps us obtain those, meet those goals. Um, we've also had some program efficiencies between the two buildings. Um, there's some efficiencies with the bookstore and stu- student services that'll help us offset some of the costs. And we can, we feel that we can do all the renovations in Center Street for the fourteen point two million once we get complete with the Melvia Street project. Next slide, please. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the small local business, um, strategy for the project. Um, when the design build team came on board in April, two thousand twenty-one, we were working with the district's small local business program, um, which gave bidding preferences to our subcontractors of up to five percent or fifty thousand dollars. Um, we worked with the design build team to establish small local business enterprise percentage goals on an individual scope trade package, like subcontractor per scope trade package. Um, the design build team increased utilization of various resources and consultants um, with the construction resource center, Tonma and Low Consulting to help maximize the outreach, um, to all the small local businesses in our area. The design build team also did outreach to other local municipalities, including city of Oakland, A C Transit, Port of Oakland and Alameda County to really try to maximize the amount of firms bidding on our project. Next slide, please. So, these are the results. Um, we had sixty-nine subcontractors submit pre-qualification applications to bid on our project. The first round, when we first started, it was previously thirty-one, so they had a huge increase um, to, to the initial participation. Out of those sixty-nine subcontractors, sixty-six became pre-qualified to bid on the project. Um, when we collected bids in October, um, forty-eight bids were received out of those sixty-six, uh, pre-qualification applications. And based on, hopefully we get through approval tonight, we'll be awarding twenty-three subcontracts um, out of those forty-eight bids received, um, based on the small local business program with the district. Next slide, please. This gives you a breakdown in dollars. So we've broken this down into two tiers. The first tier are firms that are defined by the Peralta Community College Small Local Business Program, um, which are firms that have a annual revenue of under eight million dollars and are located within the six, uh, cities of the program. The second tier are firms that are within other local municipalities, like I was just explaining, like Port of Oakland, City of Oakland, County of Alameda. These firms have, uh, under twenty million annual revenue and are located within Alameda County. So, based on dollar amount, right now, we're looking to award nine point one million dollars worth of contracts to small local businesses that are fit within the Peralta's program and in another three point three million dollars worth of contracts that fit within the Alameda County definition of a small local business for a total of twelve point four million. Next slide, please. So, next steps on the project. So, the design build team and Kitchell and everybody's really excited to get this project started. We did the demolition of the existing Melvia Street building last summer while we were at D S A for, waiting for approval. Um, so next month, we're planning to kick off some archaeological testing and investigation before full construction gets started. Um, April, the design build team will mobilize and begin groundbreaking. And then by May, you'll see foundations going into the ground. Um, by the end of Q three, you'll start to see a tower crane and a big concrete structure going up. And then, by the end of Q two of next year, the whole s- building exterior will be complete. Um, the schedule right now shows substantial completion, uh, ready for occupancy around twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. And then we'll go through our closeout and final completion. Next slide, please. I think that was it. Um, I just want to thank everybody for in, the chancellor for inviting me tonight, um, to speak on behalf of our whole team. Um, everybody's worked really hard and is really excited to start construction on this project.
Thank you so much, Bob. Um, and to the whole team, thank you so much. It's been really great. So we're really excited to present this to you all tonight, uh, trustees.
Do we have any questions from the board?
A simple question since I really do not know much about construction, but you have the guaranteed maximum price for, at eighty-six million, which thank you for negotiating that. But, does that actually mean that no matter what, whether y- you, you run a little late, you go past Q two, twenty-twenty-six, or something else happens, that is the guaranteed maximum price regardless of?
Correct. That is, that is the guaranteed maximum price unless we have some sort of unforeseen like condition that could never been of anticipated. But, we also have our owner's project contingency outside of that just as a secondary, like belt and suspender.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I don't have a question so much as a comment. Um, I'm really excited to have this project. I used to work across the street from it. So I've watched the demo actually happen, um, which was really exciting. So I just want to say this is a really um, great thing for our district and we're really looking forward to it. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we need a motion to?
Motion, we already had a motion, so we just need a roll call on this.
All right. Uh, so this is, uh, ten point five, student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez? Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan has departed. Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item ten point six. Okay. Uh, yes, so, uh, trustee Withrow? And, yes. Would you have any discussion on this item? No? Okay, roll call, please.
Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez? Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Bellarice? Trustee Gonzalez Ewan has departed. Trustee, uh, Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item ten point seven. Consider approval of the independent contractors uh, agreement for special services for district-wide community-based security services with Marina Security Services in the amount not to exceed six million dollars.
Ooh-hoo.
Trustee Withrow moved to approve. Is there a second? Trustee Reese seconded. Discussion? No discussion? Call for the vote?
Student trustee Masson?
Yes.
Student trustee Vasquez? Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez Ewan is not here. Trustee Johannes?
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Yes.
Trustee Quinlan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we're on to announcements? Board of Trustees reports. Want to start, trustee Withrow?
I'll pass.
Trustee Reese?
I will pass.
The student trustees?
Oh.
Yeah, I can, I, I can go. Um, hello? I'd just like to announce our student government meeting, uh, governance meeting that we'll be having tomorrow, February twenty-eighth at four-thirty. You've heard about this, but I wanted to share a little bit more. This is Naomi and I's first attempt at organizing students across Peralta. We hope to spread the discussion of academic probation, chancellor listening sessions, and the upcoming P B I M retreat. We plan for these meetings to be recurring and we'll report on it more after. Separately, I wanted to thank trustee Delphine Polk for meeting with, um, student trustee Vasquez and I. We were able to further develop our ideas in amplifying student voices and learn from her commitment to the district as a trustee. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Um, last week I had the privilege of joining the S S triple C Women's Caucus and the S S triple C Student Trustee Caucus. Um, student trustee Massand and I also met with Mark Johnson to officially decide on the placement for our resource and training project for student leaders. Uh, with the help of Mark, our efforts to help present future Peralta and present students as well, um, understand P B I M will be in the form of written entries on the P B I M section of the Peralta website. Lastly, um, thanks to Isabella Sabo from the Citizen, we were able to share our stories and experiences as student trustees so far, um, with the Peralta Citizen Newsletter. So thank you to them. Um, that concludes my report.
Trustee Delphine Polk?
Um, sure. Um, I feel like it's been a long time since our last meeting, so I'm trying to remember some of the stuff that I did. Um, yesterday, we did have lunch, um, myself and this, our student trustees. It was really great to connect with y'all and to see where you work, uh, student trustee Massad, and to get a tour of Berkeley City College. It had been some time since I had been there, so um, I really appreciate, um, meeting with you and I hope to continue that. Thank you so much.
Trustee Johannes?
All right, um, I want to start by saying, um, over the weekend, I was at an event, um, and while I was there, there was a woman who approached, uh, myself and my cousin, said, hey, can I take your photograph? She had a professional camera. She said, but, but also I'm a student. And she said, I'm in my fifties. I'm, I'm just learning. Can I just take your photo? Okay, great. My cousin happened to ask, well, where are you learning? Uh, how to do photography? And I said, she said, well, Laney College. And she was like, can I tell you? They had the best support, the faculty, the staff, she said, the facilities. She named everything. She said the equipment. She was like, a lot of students can't afford the equipment, so they have it there. She was, and she drives up to class from Union City and is very happy to do so. So it was just like a really I don't know, it was just a refreshing thing to hear. I shouldn't say refreshing. It was just, it was just, uh, I was just happy to hear that about, um, Laney. So I just want to shout out photography, photography department um, for making the students or student, at least this one, feel welcome and feel as though she's like really, really getting something from us. Uh, so it's just really, um, good to hear. And secondly, I, um, I did hear from the student, um, rep that there was the Sunday dinner, which I couldn't attend today at College of Alameda, but I will say on Thursday, there's the, I'm reading this now, the email. At B C C, there's a Black History Month and Lunar New Year, uh, celebration, uh, twelve twenty specifically to one-thirty. Um, it's the closing ceremony. So I hope, I hope I can make that, um, I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Um, so I have a report. Last Friday, I attended, uh, the conference on attracting women, uh, manufacturing and basic skills. Um, it was down at, uh, um, Olani College. Um, the amazing thing was in the presentation by former students and the, that exceeded in, in various parts of, uh, the skilled trades and, and in high performance jobs in, in local industry. There were three Laney students that, uh, talked, uh, and, you know, uh, complimented the, the Laney, uh, departments that they'd come from, how well they were prepared for success. And then, uh, I also spoke later on the conference on a panel on strategies in attracting women to the, uh, skilled trades and manufacturing. It was a great conference. Thank you. Think, um, adjournment? Oh, announcements. Okay, ah, that's me again.
You're doing great.
Yeah. A lot of these are making trouble with these things and it is running them.
Like me to? Would you like me to help you?
I think I have. There we go. Uh, let's see. Laney Women's Basketball Team earns the Bay Valley Conference Co-Championship. Is that the only announcement we have? Yes.
I can just, I. So the spring semester is underway, but it's not too late to enroll. We have short-term classes on a wide range of subjects starting in March. Spring is free for California residents who apply for financial aid and take six credits or more. Visit www.peralta.edu backslash enroll to start the enrollment process. Peralta Community College District continues to celebrate Black History Month in February, and there are events happening at each of the colleges this week. Visit the Peralta website, peralta.edu and scroll down to the Events Across the District, which details the many events. The Peralta Colleges will be celebrating the Lunar New Year with our annual Asian American and Pacific Islander employee reception coming up on Friday, March first here in the atrium from two to four P M. Uh, the Laney College Annual Women in Trades is coming up on March sixth, so mark your calendars from eleven A M to one-thirty P M in the Laney Quad. And lastly, again, for the third time, but just want to make sure you come. Please join us on Tuesday, March twelfth, uh, and as we celebrate fifteen faculty candidates for tenure, the annual tenure reception will be here in the atrium from four to six P M, right before the next Board of Trustees meeting. There will be food, beverages and live jazz for the celebration. Hope to see you there.
Thank you, Chancellor. You're hired.
Good teamwork.
Without, I think we can adjourn the meeting?
Oh, sorry.
Just one last, I wanted to just mention, um, because I wanted to shout out Merrick College's basketball team. I went to a game Thursday and I forget the, the college, but it's the Mustangs, wherever the Mustangs are. Um, they didn't win, they didn't win, but there was good hustle, the, the team played well. There were some dunks in there, like, you know, they, they did well. That's all. Just want to say, nice job, nice hustle. Yes, I wore my gear. I was the only one, like.
Now we're ready to adjourn. Thank you, everyone, for bearing with me.
Excellent job. Thank you. Excellent job. Thank you.